Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the traffic across town. There was a situation that happened earlier. Glad Tom got that out. And thank you for CB for allowing us to come here and mute this last minute. And thank all of you for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. So for presentation for staff, so everyone knows in the room who is here. So we have Gabriel Elliott, who is our planning director for the county. So he'll be leading most of the conversation tonight and going to the presentation. We also here have Doug Oliver, who is the head of building for the county. And we also have CCWD in the room. We've got a couple employees. We've got the GM, Mike Meachler, and our director, Wes Thomas. So thank you for being here tonight. We also have our former Digital 4 Planning Commissioner, Kelly in the back too. So thanks Kelly for coming down. So the purpose of tonight is to go over what the public comments for the last month and a half of the Copper Community Plan. And Gabriel will walk through what that's going to look like. Because since the last time many of you have participated, and I think a lot of you in this room have participated over the last, what, three decades? Or more? It has changed a little bit because since that time, we now have a general plan. And so Gabriel will walk through what that now looks like with the adoption of the general plan and what steps are going to take place next with the Copper Community Plan. This plan is the lack of the community plan that was set by the board of supervisors prior to me coming on board. And it had been adopted through a strategic plan. So board supervisors, I can entirely want to see this completed. So your input is very vital, not just for me, but letting core board members do well through this process. And what are going to be the next steps? So today, there's been a lot of input over the last month and a half online. Now we're going to go through that. And then next step, Gabriel will review the comment. And tonight, you'll have opportunity to speak to the board to continue to write comments. And then we'll come back at a later date with a final draft for anyone to look at and review. And I'm going to turn it over to Gabriel at this point, so he can go into more details about what's going to happen with participation.
I'm Mr. Wes Follendorf. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this community townhouse meeting. When I came on board a little bit over a year ago, one of the things that I was beset with is the several hundreds of pages of community plans for Copperopolis. That plan, I think, began about 2005. I saw Kenny Worcester's name on one document. It was way back when, and a couple of other people. And whatever happened to that plan, it never got to be implemented. That plan was stopped abruptly. In the interim, the county adopted a general plan. And part of that general plan, the county also included community plans or other communities outside of Copperopolis. So we have a situation where we have a general plan that has a map of the Copperopolis community plan area, but without a document. And when we began this process, we sent out notices to everyone, or at least to as many people as I was able to receive them, seeking input as to what we want this community plan to look like based on the structure that we currently have with some of the other community plans. Now, one thing that I found the uniform is the community description. I like some of the history that was brought into the community plan, and then some of the different aspects of the plan, goals and objectives, and so on and so forth. So we're going to try to go through that this evening. The question has been asked earlier, do we have a community plan? And the answer is no, we don't. We're trying to build one together. So as we go through this meeting this evening, I will be doing some live editing on some of these documents based on comments received. I'm going to need two volunteers to be stationed at the either end of the room, so to write comments, or if individual persons would rather write comments on the easel, not a pad on the easel, that would be fine too, because I'm going to take all that document, anything written on there, and I'm going to try to incorporate it into this, into this community plan. Now, I received quite a lot of comments, actually. And most of them were actually very, very productive. Some were very detailed. And one thing I did tell Supervisor Follendorf is that this has to be a community effort. It has to be a combined effort of the different elements of this community. So to that extent, the plan is live and open. Nothing is cast in stone yet. We are at the beginning stages of putting one together. And if you were a member of any of the groups that actually did the initial community plan, would you raise your hand? Anybody in here? One, two, three, four, five? Kelly, are you one of them, original writers of the community plan?
I was not an official member of the latest, first group to put together a draft. I was a member of the last one. We didn't produce anything.
Right, right. Very good. So from the history, from what I've read, it seemed like that plan took a lot of planning to put together. It took a lot of meetings to put together. And I could feel the community effort behind it. I could feel that people considered it to be a very, very important piece. Now, I have to let you know, though, that the community plan is not a specific one, which is this community plan does not replace the county's zoning ordinance. The county's zoning ordinance still is the county's zoning ordinance, but we can include as much important information in our community plan, especially when we talk about goals and objectives, what would you like to see, what is the vision of this community plan, what is the vision of this community that you would like to be emblazoned in the community plan? So those elements of it would be very much useful for the exercise we're about to go through. So with that much to do, I'm going to try to go into some of the language that I've received so far, as far as the location and description. And I'm using the format that currently exists in the county's general plan for other community plans. So it begins with location and community description, and then it goes into community vision. And the vision aspect of it is where I would like to get some of the input from those who have actually been part of the original plan and those who are currently, have currently sent new comments to have included in the community plan itself. So, is there a little... But I'm going to set the microphone down. Actually, I'm going to take it with me, if the cord is moving enough, and try to sit here and do some typing at the same time, if possible. So regarding location and community description, the Copperopolis community plan area encompasses approximately 39 square miles and is located north of and it gets into Lake Tulluck with Auburn's Ferry Road and Highway 4 serving as appropriate transportation routes. Now, this comes directly from some of the older documents, and I don't think there's any argument we can add to this statement, or we can take this statement and move on. The community plan area extends from Diamond double X subdivision, North Highway 4, south. It just kind of gives us a description of what some of these communities are that actually make up the plan. It talks about the water bodies within the community plan itself, and then it talks about Copperopolis being a cultural land primarily used for cattle grazing and certain mining activities prior to the 1950s, and so on and so forth. So this is just straightforward information that we can add on to or take away from. And then it talks about physical destruction of the zoning area. This comes from a combination of comments received from several people. And if there's any discrepancy in here, we can go ahead and amend it. The history part of it, I think it's really important for us to kind of go back a little into the prehistoric period of Copperopolis and talk about the natives that were here at that time. Because every time we do a dig, they're not very far away. You acquire artifacts and things like that as we do excavation exercises throughout the community. And then it talks about the European settlers in the 1860s. You know, Copperopolis is a very important point. In fact, the arbor itself, which we were earlier this evening, is a very good part of our nation's history. And we are very, very fortunate to have a place like the arboria actually in Copperopolis. And so, you know, still a lot of history. We cannot talk about Copperopolis without talking about Lake Tulluck. It is just very obvious that it is one of those attractions. So it is one of those really important attractions. We got to talk about, you know, Lake Tulluck, the capacity, tritan, and what they do, and things of that nature. And then this is the part where I think we're going to start to get diversity of opinion, and this is where I actually welcome any comments, additions, additions, et cetera, et cetera. So I took this vision out of a combination of information received from comments. What everybody seems to agree that the most original community, the original community vision, vision hasn't changed very much since the plan was, that was adopted, put the plan together, you know, many decades ago. Copperopolis will remain, will retain its small-town atmosphere, preserve its natural beauty, and protect its vast recreational opportunities while embracing diverse housing, commercial, recreational, and employment opportunities integrated with the natural resources and open space elements of the community. Lake Tulluck will flourish as a community attraction. It is a vision that through revitalization efforts, historic Copperopolis will be turned into a vibrant, attractive town center and tourist destination with a town center hosting community events and providing opportunities to serve residents and tourists alike. There are already community events being held at the town center right now. That vision is beginning to be realized as the town center has turned into an attractive town center and tourist destination, and is hosting community events and providing opportunities to serve residents and tourists. Copperopolis will remain a nice, successful, prosperous community with long-term residents who care, and new residents who embrace the lifestyle and culture of the area. I think it's very important to emphasize that this is a community that respects the long-term residents. The long-term residents, this means you care. But at the same time, we welcome new residents who embrace the lifestyle and culture of the area. When we get into some of the other parts of this document, we're going to begin to see some of the goals and objectives which would lead one to believe that there are certain elements that are coming into this community that don't wholly buy into that particular lifestyle because they don't really, they don't really understand or know. Copperopolis will continue to enrich the generation, next generation, through participation in groups like the Forage and Future Partners of America. I received a comment about motorized and non-motorized vehicles. And I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure that I respected that particular point of view. Because as we move forward, when we talk about circulation and things of that nature, we need to be able to understand that we also want to encourage non-motorized vehicles in certain parts where they are appropriate and where there's suitable infrastructure for them. Not that we introduce motorized vehicles into every aspect of the community, but where it is appropriate, we're going to have motorized vehicles, we're going to have non-motorized vehicles, so that everybody can enjoy what Copperopolis has to offer. So the fervent wish of the community is that people who visit Copperopolis live with the impression that it is a peaceful place and friendly town where all are welcome. Now, I want feedback on this portion of the document, which is the vision portion. Is there something that we would like to add? Is there something that's missing out of this? Do we have too much information, or do we have too little information? And anybody who wants to speak, I can extend the microphone.
Gabriel, I'd like to talk without the microphone.
Okay.
You probably know that I was the chair of the Copperopolis Community Plan Advisory Committee for going on nine, eight or nine years. Slogged through this with hundreds of people involved. We spent $50,000 in the process, $40,000 provided by a grant from the Great Valley Center in Central Valley. And that raises my first point, not on the vision, but our elevation couldn't have been... First thing that I was asked when I went to ask for the grant was, what is the elevation of Copperopolis? Is it higher than 1,000 feet? And I said, no, it's 700 feet. And the elevation of the lake is 510. So that has to be corrected. It's very important that the Lake Tulluck is focused upon, and that's the main elevation or the minimum elevation of Copperopolis. It does go up to town mountain, 2,000 or so. But I'm really very pleased that it seems to me that you have used the original vision statement that we came up with back in 2000, I think it was, a year 2000?
Yeah.
The arboria with 150...
2,001.
2,001. Okay, but that's when, that's when we handed in the document. But I will never forget that there are 150 people in the room, there were two ladies that came up with, by far, the best recommendation for the vision of Copperopolis, and essentially what you've said here, that Copperopolis should continue to be a nice rural community where everybody likes what they see and they go away with a good impression if they're coming through. Our, let me digress a little bit more. Our group was, the plan that we came up with was criticized in the beginning because people thought that we were advocating that Copperopolis grow to 40,000 people. That was never the intent. If you go back to where you said that the area of Copperopolis, 39 square miles, if you look at the ground plan of City of Menestua where I was born, it's 200,000 people living in 39 square miles there. And we were scared to death that that same thing might happen here. And so we incorporated into the plan that we would hope that future members of the boards of supervisors would only entertain applications that overall would produce a density of about a half house per acre over the whole 39 square miles. And that would produce a maximum population of 40,000 people. And anyway, it really upset me when people pointed at me and said, what do you mean? Would you want Copperopolis to be 40,000? I grew up in Menestua, I don't like to go there anymore. Really do not.
I mean, as a matter of point, the county's population, the entire county's population right now is about 45,000.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's soaking wet, 40,000. So no figure. Copperopolis will, yeah, I just don't, I just don't see that happening because of a lot of different factors. One, it's the lifestyle. You know, we have a lot of vacant land that in conservation that would never get developed and right this way. So, and I don't see that changing anytime soon because there are benefits to have your property in conservation and so on and so forth.
But the fact that 3,000 acres has been put in conservation easement helps with that arithmetic that we were hoping to achieve with this group.
Absolutely.
Not a problem. I'll stop talking in just a second. But I want to see how you could consider weaving into your document some consideration of the pathway from Auburn's Ferry to the west shore of New Malonees. We fought for that, made trips to Washington DC with the Bureau of Reclamation and Department of Interior, and they were in the process of doing their 40, 50-year Recreation Management Plan update. And we got them to just crack the door open, and it says in their document that they filed back years and years ago, that they couldn't afford to fund a facility like that. They said that there was an effort to put that pathway and facilities over there on the west shore. But they did not say we opposed it. They said that they cannot, that they can't fund it. Now, I don't know. It's one of my big disappointments in getting elected to the Board of Supervisors was that immediately upon putting the plan at the table of the Board of Supervisors, they shut it down and said, we can't, we can't do this. We don't have enough money to do the planning for this. And that resulted in all of us essentially wasting our time for close to 10 years, and that weighs heavily on me. And I couldn't do anything about it. I thought that I would have to get elected to be on the Board of Supervisors so that I could implement the plan, but the door was shut. Getting back to the pathway to New Malonees. Lake Tulluck is not accessible to just a fairly small percentage of the people that live in Copperopolis. In a way, that's a good thing because if any more people were using it on them, you could walk from boat to boat. So we've got 1,200 acres of surface area in Lake Tulluck. We have 12,000 surface areas in New Malonees, and a three and a half mile road could give access to people from Copperopolis to that larger recreational facility. So, and we had a willing property owner, Dr. Morrissey and his wife, they said, we'll give you access across there, but we've got some property on Auburn's Ferry Road we'd like to do something with commercially, you know, something that we could use there. But the county turned their back on them. They've turned their back on for close to 20 years. And it's such a shame. You work so hard to try to get things done, and I don't know what happens. I could point a little bit. When I got defeated for my reelection bid, there was a guy whose name I can't remember said something like Spildor or something. But anyhow, he was, he represented this area for, you might say, 10 minutes, and then they redistricted, and then Tom Tryon became the representative, and he was not, he didn't know anybody here. He was an Angel Camp guy. And then Debbie Ponte, essentially the same thing. Fortunately, we've got Amanda Follendorf, who I perceive as being extremely focused and interested in Copperopolis, and I really want to acknowledge the interaction that I've had with her. I think that she will do a good job for us. But let's acknowledge some of the stumbling that we've done, and let's resolve together to reward the people, the hundreds of people that were involved in these various attempts at the community plan, and, God, let's have something happen. If I can, I would contribute what limited funds I have toward the construction of that road. And at the time that it seemed like that that was achievable, Castle &amp; Cook said, we'll put $1,000 on every house that we build to make a contribution toward that funding of that road. Probably the cost of the road has gone up three times since we first talked about it. But it's still achievable. I mean, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, that are collected on vote fees, relicensing fees, that are specifically collected to build facilities. So anyway, I'm sorry I took so long with that. I had to get it off my chest.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for sharing.
So a couple of comments and questions. One question is, as we were, I looked at two of the completed community plans that are on the planning website, and it talks about history and community vision, but it doesn't go into specific areas such as recreation, vision, community plan, which would be an appropriate place to document a lot of the ideals, energy, and work that's gone into, for example, the Road to Malonees plan. A, does this community plan provide such a place for topics, specific ideas, and wants?
Absolutely. As we move down, as you move down the document, you would see exactly what I'm talking about. But I just want to echo something because when I read...
And then I have two more questions. No, go ahead.
So when I read the community vision, I had to agree with it because it showed, it said there was a sense of dedication to it. And I moved words around a little bit. I added additional information that I have received since. But the body of the community vision kind of almost remains original, and you can't go wrong with perfection. So kudos to the group that started this exercise, you know, 20 something odd years ago. And today, we are looking at those words, and it seems like it was spoken yesterday. So thank you very much. Do you have two more, you have two more comments, man?
Yes. One is, some of us are better at thinking, reviewing, editing, when we actually get to read a document and kind of sit with it a little bit. Will there be an opportunity for us to take the existing document and spend some time in...
Absolutely.
Okay. And then there will be additional feedback?
Yes, there will be additional meetings that incorporates whatever additional information we gathered. Up to this point, as I mentioned earlier, as Supervisor mentioned earlier, we received quite a lot of comments. Some of it was substantial and substantive, and they are reflected in one wishy-wishy form as we kind of move along with this document. As far as the road issue, CB developers, do you want to make any comment on any of the statements made?
Pardon me. We're connected road. We're pretty aware of it. I don't know what time was Russ on it. It's something that would require a lot of different people getting involved, including the government officials.
Absolutely. It is something that I think it's also a priority of Supervisor herself.
Can I make a comment on what Russ said about moving the people from Copperopolis up? You know, it'd be a way for people from Copperopolis to get to New Malonees. It's a way for everybody from the valley to get to Copperopolis. And... And in the last 20, 25 years, the Oberyn's Ferry Road has become horribly inundated with people going back and forth between Highway 108 and 4. It is horrible. It's dangerous. There is one bridge, and at that bridge, where there's an accident, there was the other day. You know, so it's not just the people up here getting to a bigger lake where they can recreate that's more conducive, that has launch ramps, that has recreation, that has campgrounds, that has all the services. It's for everybody to get to.
Very good.
Now, Gabriel?
Oh, can I jump back to that comment? Go back to the vision page.
Well, I was just gonna say that you weren't a volunteer for taking notes, so if you need written down, just let me know what you want me to write down.
Okay, so make some points. You have the black or red. And if you just, whatever it is, just write it down for me. And so, we want to go back to the vision page.
Right, just a couple of words. The first statement says, refers to Copperopolis and its small-town atmosphere. The term that I actually hear more amongst residents and those of us who often talk about where Copperopolis is going is a rural atmosphere versus small-town. I'm not even sure we have a town. Is that old-town, is it town square, is it IGA? And where is our small-town?
Absolutely. Okay, very good. So, we want to, let me see. So, we want to...
I'm sorry?
Some are rural.
Right.
Rural?
Rural community.
Okay. That right? Yeah. Is that one more? This one working? Great, not dragging them.
Okay.
All right, so we let me highlight this word that we changed.
Yeah, we don't like atmosphere. We're thinking rural community as opposed to an atmosphere.
Okay, rural.
There you go.
Okay, is there a reason? It's rural. Okay, we will describe to train with this, make rural community work with...
Yeah, you can pretty it up.
Yeah.
If you go to the second paragraph, seconds, one, two, third line.
Yes.
"That vision is beginning to be realized as the Copperopolis Town Center is turned into an attractive town center." Are you referring to the town square?
Yes.
So...
Town square.
Many, many residents in Copperopolis refer to it as "the town square."
Okay.
I guess legally.
Is that...
Correct, as "the town square." I think Copper Valley owners prefer to it as something different, so...
They started as a square and then changed to center.
Okay.
Oh, is it the town center now? So, whatever, whatever the legal name is of that area is probably what it should be.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good.
It's a little bit different, being the town square.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Two different areas.
Okay.
It sounds like it's the same area. They're two different areas.
The square is private property. And it's supposed to be private property. Actually, secondly, it's called the town square at Copper Valley.
So, what I have meant... Okay. Right. So, Doug, are you taking notes? All right. And given, any additional comments?
Second line says town center.
Second line says town center. Okay. They are two separate. We have historic Copperopolis and then we have the town square. And they're not going to be the same. So, I need to go back and try to...
What do you consider the town center? That's, I think that's one of the same.
They're one of the same.
Yeah. Square and the center are the same.
Very good. I'll make, edit, size, and message them. Very good. All right, anything else?
I think there's a historic. And then we have a new town square. Which is the town square.
Right.
And they both contribute. The old-town Copperopolis contributes more to the history. The previous location they lived was the old armory.
Yes.
And you have the old corn saloon.
Right.
Which is a historical place.
Right.
And so, we need to incorporate both of those centers, commercial centers, in proper wording.
Okay. I just highlighted that entire paragraph.
And you're getting a very good location.
Oh, yes. Okay, what should we say about the golf course?
It's going Copper Valley now.
The golf course is also a visitor.
I think I have some information on the golf course. You know, we can incorporate it.
We may worry about it. We want action to New Maloney's. That's a very valuable thing. And for the future. And we can show a preliminary plan of some sort indicating the intention of developing that. And there may be enough money to develop with the commercial aspect of that to pay for the new bridge. We need a new bridge to replace the Oberyn's Ferry Road Bridge, which is dangerous.
Yeah, I think we can put that under our goals and objectives.
Yeah, we don't know what's down below.
Right. Okay.
So, yes, I have the other one more paragraph next to it. We mentioned something about bike paths and walking paths. I think that's a great idea. One of the other things I would like to see is some type of park in the community. Right now, we have the Black Creek Park, which is a private park by Kiva Associates and can't be used by other people. There's no other park in Copperopolis where high-rise kids and other kids can go to enjoy the outdoors and stuff. So, I would like to see something in vision.
Okay, very good. Again, as we move through this document, you would find some of these things. But as far as incorporating it into the vision, I think it's a good idea as well. So, if, any other... So, going into the community goals, and if you have any additional suggestions, please let me know. We'll try and talk.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who, who in the, this is a community plan document, right? Or a community vision. Who speaks for the community?
Everybody and everybody.
So, are you, are we gonna vote on this?
So, what happens is when we agree on the language of this community plan...
No, because I'm gonna interrupt you just right there. Who agrees to the language? The planning committee? I mean, the planning commission? The planning department?
The planning commission approves the document and makes a recommendation to the board of supervisors who then adopt the community plan into the general plan.
Okay, so if there's, let's hypothetically say there's a group of, I don't know, what is it? There 50 people in this room now, maybe? Let's say 25-1A and 25-1D. Who breaks the tie? Who makes the call? And what about the other 5,000 people out there that aren't in this meeting?
Right, well, at the end of the day, the... I'm not sure if there is a way we can actually craft a plan that is going to envision everybody's point of view. We have to find some common grounds. And that would be the answer to your question. We find a common ground, 25-1A, 25-1B. So, what is the common ground? If those two things are polar extremes to each other, then we have to bring something into the middle. So, that's how I'm gonna answer that question for you.
Does that create a... But see, that doesn't really answer the question. If this is the community plan, the community as a whole needs to at least be, one, be aware, and two, at least have an opportunity to comment. And based on just the existence of this meeting up here in South Creek, the communication is lacking.
Do you know why we're here today? Because we were supposed to be at the Armory, and there was a fire in mind that built. And so, we had to move the meeting.
No, no, I don't have a problem that the meeting was moved. I have a, my question is more about the fact that I suspect a lot of people, myself included, did not know the meeting was moved. I went to the Armory, and somebody was posted and known of me.
That would be me.
Okay, but...
It was the last minute. It wasn't last, absolutely last minute thing.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying that when this plan gets developed, there's gotta be a better way to disseminate the information or the possibility of this document approval and solicit input. That's all I...
And that's, so going back to what I said earlier, that is what part of this process is. So, we've been doing a lot of online comment. So, that was what could get to this point today in person to start going through this, collect more comments. They'll all go through more public comment period before they go to the planning commission, which then again, another public comment opportunity period. And then depending on that, and then it'll go to the Board of Supervisors for final adoption.
I think what Jack is saying is, how do we get everybody, or at least more than 50 people, to be aware that this is going on? I'm pretty active in our community, but I'm also a county employee who... And I subscribe to the planning commission notices. So, that's how I found out about it. If I wasn't on the community, on the county website regularly and happened to bump into it, I wouldn't have known.
See, the feeling that you guys think this is gonna be adopted tomorrow is not. This is a monthly. This is gonna be months in prior.
Here.
So, I think that if there is this concern that we're gonna be going to the Board of Supervisors next month to adopt it, that's not happening. This is the first step of the public comment to get everybody out and about, as well as online public comment. So, this is not gonna be going to the Board of Supervisors until we get the consensus of the community to the flexibility. But we're not gonna get all the residents to be contributing. And the outreach that has been going on, they've been through the website, it's been going on the news, Facebook, and not the stuff. We're trying to trigger this to, this will get bigger. So, there is not a timeline that this is gonna be adopted tomorrow.
So, why don't we give a date for the next meeting? So, as we're all thinking, we're planning ahead.
And now, what would happen? Once, staff need to take everything that's happened in this room.
But it's a meeting every month, so why can't we come up with a month from today we meet or something?
That is gonna be on with the staff after they collect this to give them, they need to let me know what their workload is to collect and put this together. And then, like I said, there are gonna be more meetings that are gonna be happening. But setting that deadline right now, prior to staff who've been here and watching this room, is premature.
What would...
Now, when it's gonna set, it's gonna be March.
One of the reasons why we have a sign-up sheet on either side of the door is where you have your name, address, phone number, or email so that we can notify you of these meetings. That is the entire purpose of it. So, if you came in and you didn't sign the sheet, please go ahead and do that so that we'll notify you. Our job is to notify as many people. There you go.
John is holding it up.
John is holding it up right there. If you haven't signed, there's one on that side as well. If you haven't signed, please sign. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. We're doing the very best we can to notify every single person who would have an impact on this document. It is your document, and we want your input in this document. Yes, Larry?
Okay. In our age of life, when we have a document that is gonna be changed or created, we have to put it out for a 28-day review. So, when you have this finally put together and you're ready to send it to the Board of Supervisors, I feel that you should send it to all the residents of Copperopolis for a 28-day review so that they can see it with a date or a town hall so that they can come and give their comments. Because you are not gonna get enough people with... I mean, yeah, we're all gonna sign up because you got us. But you're not gonna get the rest of the residents in Copperopolis by word of mouth. So, I feel that it's not fair to not give everybody in Copperopolis the opportunity to see the finished product before it gets submitted. And so, if you give us the opportunity, you mail it to every resident in Copperopolis, give us a 28-day review, give us a date where we will meet with you and have us give our comments. And then you take it under advisement, make whatever changes you agree with, then submit it. But it's not right for you to just meet with 20, 30, 40 people when there's several thousand people in Copperopolis that you're not gonna reach.
So, I'm thinking of what I need to write down here as the libertarian theory. What I'm hearing is that there should be more venues to communicate these meetings so that more people can attend. Now, I understand as a department head, I understand that this is very preliminary, which means it hasn't gone to an official comment process. This is the, we're restarting the groundwork with what was originally provided. And Gabriel is getting the comments so he can continue to cut back to you guys monthly. What I'm hearing is that we need more people in the room and we need a way to communicate to get people to the room. So, what I'm, I did, what I'd like to write down is, and then I'll come to your point about if there's an impasse. But I think if I, there's a couple of things that might be helpful. What are helpful communication methods that your community uses more frequently that we can tie into? Are there bulletin boards or HOA? Is there a HOA?
Banners.
What's that?
Banners.
Well, banners, then we'll see. So, this is on the cheap with County Department of Land. So, can we reach out to HOA websites so that we can post on our websites?
Yeah.
Next door.
I'll go to next door.
Okay. Have you next door?
Post your site at IGA, right next to the...
Okay, so bulletin boards? Are there church bulletin boards that we don't know about? Are there... Because I think planning has been doing a great job of getting the information out in a normal manner. If this many people are showing up, at some point, we have to recognize these are the people that have the interest. And then when we go to the planning commission, is it fair to say that there's gonna be an official comment period? And if there is an impasse on items or disagreements, those are communicated to planning commission, and they will clear both sides and make a determination. So, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to talk, as they've explained. But if there's venues that aren't being used yet, if you can communicate to us, we can get it out there. So, it sounds like, as I anticipated, we've hit the primary, you can get HOA websites and things like that. But if there's more, is it next door? If we haven't used next door, we can explore that. If there's anything else as a communication tool, just bring it up, talk to me, I'll put it on the board.
But on the county's website? Is it on the county's website?
It is. It's on the county's website.
Okay.
It's on the planning department. Everybody would sign up at the planning department. Put your email down. They're not going to sell it. They want you to be included, I promise you. Anything that goes on planning, whether it's Joe Blow getting a new barn, you will get that email, and you could go speak at his barn raising. If you guys are really interested in your heart of hearts, and you want to know what you guys do, then get involved and get on the planning commission's website. Give them your email address or a fake email address that you've monitored and now that. Because I get every single thing the county sends out. Everything.
But there's a lot of elderly people that don't have...
Then that doesn't belong as citizens to tell them.
So what I'm going to write down here is that, you know, anyone who has additional venues, they'd like us to like post on a bulletin board or something. Let me know. I'll get them on there, and we'll see if we can accommodate that, okay? And then we have the vetting process to plan as a last resort for all of us.
Okay, we're not going to go on like this. We only have this room. Copper Valley has given this room to us for only a little bit while longer. So I don't want to be here till kind of dark at night where the staff are going to clean up after us. So let's get people going here.
Thank you very much, supervisor. So we're kind of getting into the more interesting parts of this plan. And we start talking about community goals. Now, this is the part where I think some of the early conversations can actually be incorporated into the goals. And the goals come under several headings. The first one being economic development, which I think is important. Then we have aesthetics and community character. We have natural resources. We have traffic and circulation. We have historic preservation, public safety, community services, housing. So we're going to start from the top, where we talk about economic development. And so one of the goals for economic development is to establish, promote, and enhance commercial development designed to complement the character of the appropriate areas of the communities. And then we have certain actions that would help us accomplish that particular goal of economic development. Economic development is very important to the community, not just to Copperopolis. And if we look at some of these things that we've talked about, promoting additional TLT. Copperopolis is one particular area that has a hotel, a smaller one. And we want to create jobs. And, you know, we want to create additional opportunities for education, internships for the youth, for the community's youth. Training process, what the county needs to approve and construct facilities that would create employment opportunities and economic development opportunities. Invest in education and training programs that will provide residents and young people with the skills and knowledge to get a job for the future. So these are really constructive things in the area of economic development. And I think if we focus more on some of the positive aspects of what this plan really has to offer, the more we're going to get out of it. We sent out, just to touch on some of the earlier comments, there are about 700 people that actually signed up to receive information regarding any kind of planning mission activities. We sent that information last out. We have every homeless association in Copperopolis on our list. We do postings on social media. We had a posting in a newspaper for this meeting. And this is not really a decision-making meeting. What we sent a notice out in the newspaper. We sent a notice out in the newspaper for adjacent communities. So we are trying to get the word out. And I'm going to push back a little bit on that comment, because I think we've done a fairly decent job in trying to get information out of people. And unfortunately, if we hadn't moved from the armory, perhaps there'd be more people at this meeting this evening. So I'm not going to use this meeting as a yardstick to measure how successful the participation project is going to be. If there's enough interest in what we're doing, people are going to show up. There's always word of mouth. And but no plan is going to get approved without a consensus of all the members of this community. I'll get to you in a second. And I think the more we focus on what we can accomplish together, I think the better we're going to appear to get this document out. Yes, sir?
I've lived in this community a long time, and I know over 500 people. Of those 500 people, there's only a small handful that'll come and go through this tedious stuff and be that much interested. So it's probably less than 10%. And to make that even more restrictive, a lot of the people that are property owners don't live here. They come from weekends or summers. And they're not going to come up during the week to review something as complex as this. And so to think that we are somehow going to gather all the people, no way. We're lucky we have the people we have. And so I want to take my hat off to our planning director. He's doing a good job.
Yeah.
I think people have to understand that most people are out of the pack. They want everything around them. And don't want to be really a part of it. They don't want to tell you about it, but not really work for it. And so you get the people, the same people that come out every meeting, and that's it. You can't make it any better by sending out more mails or anything else. Still...
Well, I'd like to say, this gentleman's correct. This is a retirement community. And yeah, only, you know, you may have 10,000 lots, and you have 3,000 people, period. You know, then people do come home weekends. They come for the lake and all that stuff. But what's your economic development deal? Is you're proposing allowing a pot farm to go in right across the street from town center, 1,000 feet from Highway 4. Okay?
Yep.
He's building three and a half acres of pot, where you can drive by, and all the tourists are going to drive by. Oh, we can buy pot here. We don't want to be known for that. He's got 140-something acres. It could be on the other side of his property, and no one would know it, and no one would give a damn, to be honest with you, okay? He's going to put it right on Highway 4. Okay.
Go ahead.
And I know all the... A bunch of this, talking to the guy who approved it from the county, okay? This morning, when he gave my final on my building.
Don't keep it on our address, too.
No, not on our address. But the bottom line is... The bottom line is, you've given him free rein. He's got his, you know, he's over there in 20-acre parcels or whatever the hell it is. He's got 140 acres. It could be somewhere else. He shouldn't be allowed to grow right on the highway, and he shouldn't be allowed to put a dispensary on the highway. We don't want... Because that's the next step. Trust me, that's the next step.
I agree with your sentiment, but this is a subject that we need to discuss in a separate meeting, because if we start getting into this aspect...
No, this is part of our economic goals. And it's not what we want for this community.
Okay, if you read the goals of the community plan for economic development, do you see anything related to marijuana on there?
No, it's not on there anymore. But it's been passed. How old is this document? How old is this document, sir?
This document? This document is pending.
When was it passed? 30 years ago? 20 years ago?
We're working to pass this document.
Okay, so...
This is the beginning stages. So what happened with the marijuana thing, those of you who are residents of this community, you know, you knew when the county went through that process. And you had opportunity to make comments at that time. Unfortunately, it is raising its ugly head right now when we're trying to get something constructive moving towards. I am not saying you don't have a point. What I'm saying is that if we focus on this, we take our eyes off what is more important. We're here, we're going to deal with that issue, and we're going to deal with it satisfactorily. The parties that are involved have already, you know, there have already been meetings, there are meetings currently going on. So that is going to take... That's going to take its course, and we're going to get there. But let's take this time that we have together and focus on the positive aspects of this plan. I, you know, this plan does not include anything that has to do with marijuana growth. It has nothing to do with... If you read it, it talks about transit occupancy. It talks about education and jobs. You know, there's nothing in here that says, you know, we want to improve the economic well-being of our community by allowing marijuana to grow anywhere in this planning area. It's not saying that.
Can we put in there, we do not want to allow?
Do we write that down?
At least it goes on your notes.
Yeah.
Doug, go ahead and just add on to it.
Yeah.
Moving along, write this down, move along.
All right. It's a quick comment, and it's hard to circle back to communications after that. But I just, I want not to commiserate with my presence becoming a little bit. Maybe a shock to those in this room that hear that CCWT has also had some community outreach mishaps or struggles in Copperopolis. It's really hard, you know. I know what Gabriel's going through, because we try. We spend a lot of time and effort trying to get the word out, trying to do public outreach, and it doesn't reach everybody. Or it doesn't reach people until some people say it too late. See, Ralph, how do you tend to act like that, if anything? But what I... I'm going to make a quick plug. There's an organization in the Evans Pass area called the Evans Pass Property Owners Coalition. We've talked to the leaders of the HOAs in Copper. We really, really want to encourage the HOA in Copper to form a similar organization. What it is, is board members from each of the HOAs form this group. They get together every month. The county is there, CCW is there, the sheriff is there, the fire is there. All of the agencies that impact their community go to those meetings every month and provide updates and information to the leadership of the HOAs. And the HOA blasts out to the membership. It is the most effective communication tool in the county. It is battling you in Copperopolis. Please tell your HOA boards what you can say about Copperopolis.
Thank you very much, property owners. Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much. We'll bring that up.
I don't know if this is the correct place for it, but one of my concerns back 20-some years ago when I worked on this project then, and it continues to, in my opinion, be lacking in the general plan as well. And that's the relationship between new construction and infrastructure. Typically, my experience is that the infrastructure follows the construction. That's the horse out of the barn after the door shut. It's got it, and I think that under economic development, to make a statement that says the infrastructure will be in place to support new development is what's needed, or works to that effect. Not necessarily those, but something has to be done to get the infrastructure in place before approving big projects.
Let me just chiming on that. New development pays for infrastructure. The county is not in the position to have existing infrastructure for people to tie into. So in this community, new development pays for the infrastructure. So if you can't afford the infrastructure, you can't build, because we're not that type of community that has the resources. This community is so vast. Some of the infrastructure is very old. CCWD is here. These are areas of this community. There's still a lot of septic tanks in this community. You know, I think there might be even more septic tanks than there are sewers. So we have to evolve. Once we become a community that evolves to the point where we have stubs for water, sewer, electricity in every street corner, then it will be much easier to attract development to this community. So we have challenges. And that challenge is not unique only to Copperopolis. It is unique to every area of this community. So big challenge, big challenge for us.
But I agree, I agree, it's a big challenge. But approving 2,000 new homes and then saying, oh gee, we don't have enough electricity, we don't have enough water, we don't have enough store, then it's too late. We're approving these projects.
No, 2,000 homes will not be approved if there's some infrastructure to support it.
Really?
Yes.
Well, can I say something that I've been around a long time? I was in when we were doing this work on this project. And I will say, the planning department and the previous some of the planning department heads, they have screwed up. We asked for, when you go in and do a project, the planning staff makes a recommendation. You listen to all these people. Well, on the day use park that Tridam just put in, we asked and made a recommendation that the traffic study that they used was old. We asked for there to be a turn lane. We asked for that to go in, and we basically got the middle finger. And it's going to be a mess over there. Yeah, exactly. So I disagree that some of the staff at the planning department has not listened to reason and logic and things that should have gone on. So what I think everybody's missing here is that this process is... The general plan is what's above this. And this is a community plan of things that we can do. So we have 10 times the people that we had 20 years ago. So if we all work together, I think it will help them out. And this will go through the process. But we all have to be educated. It's not a wish list. You're not going to get coke in the soda mountains like you do at school. It's things that are going to be logical and make sense. There has been piss port planning in this community for decades. That's why there was no environmental impact report when this whole Copper Valley or South Creek went in. There's no parks. There was infrastructure that was not paid for. There's... It's true. The subdivisions that went in at the lake, there wasn't planning for a community to have... All the homeowner associations have launch ramps, but they don't. Tridam should have put a launch ramp in for the people on this side of the lake. There's one on the other side. So there's a lot of things that went wrong because there wasn't the knowledge here. And typically, Copperopolis has been the stepchild of this county. Because we're at the end. That's all I'm saying. We have to listen to the good people that are here now and make sure that these projects don't get approved without making sure that infrastructure is in and that the developers pay their costs to get to it.
One of the things I don't see anybody discussing is the schools and stuff. You're going to be expanding and bringing in more people. We've got a little tiny school. It'll close up to sixth grade. Everything from seventh grade to high school has to get buzzed over the angels' camp. And that isn't a very big school either.
Okay, so let me address that, and I'll have Mr. Oliver address that as well. When we collect development fees for a project, it wants to go to the school district. School district uses that money to build schools, improve schools, et cetera, et cetera. So they have their own sources of funding. So this idea that we're going to have, you know, development in the community is going to overwhelm schools. No, schools actually benefit from those development fees because a portion of those fees go to the school district. Mr. Oliver, what is... Uh, Mr. Oliver, what is the school, uh, the school fees?
I'd like to introduce, there is a board member here tonight.
School board member? Who is a school board member?
So, who's your board?
So, I'm Mr. Governor Colonel, I am a member of the school board, uh, I care all my own time, I'm not here as a part of the school board. Um, but yes, the school does receive some monies from the county, but it's not through the building process whatsoever. The high school gets that money. All the, the taxes and stuff from new buildings, uh, go straight to the high school for, for the, for their stuff. Copper and North, Copper and North Queen are both funded by Steve, child butts in the seat. So, that's the only way we get.
And there's also a development fee for Mark, uh, Mark Twain and Brett Hart and the other, yeah, so, so they're all paid. So, so for any building permit for commercial or residential, we'll take a building permit for a senior family belonging, our office has to identify which district you live in, and then we assign the appropriate fee as, as adopted by their governing board, their district board. And so at any given time, the developer, when they pay for a building permit, let's say for a two thousand square foot house, there's approximately six thousand dollars of the total fees for permits that goes into a fund for development as the community grows in any district. So then I've, I've, I've got a list in my office of the different fees, if you have any interest in, in what districts get what fees per square foot, uh, contact me after the meeting, and I'll give you a flyer with that information. Well, actually, I'll, I'll email it to you, it's pretty.
For you. You said from every commercial building, they get a fee.
Or, it's a different rate.
Any building permit that's pulled in this county.
So, when they pull the permit for the pot farm, do they pay per acre, or do they pay nothing?
They pay for the structures they place. They pay for, they pay for the structures they place on the site.
The buildings that they built.
Correct. So if they, they have a permit, if they have a permit pending, and I'll have to check.
So they build a shed, they pay.
All right. Commercial structure, so an accessory building is usually exempt, but a greenhouse, for instance, is a commercial occupancy, and we'd be charging a fee for that.
Yeah, so you permit on.
Is there a special prize that they pay to have their pot farm as a permit?
Yes, well, I, I could, I can, I, after this presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the cannabis process.
I just remember years ago, a lot of money was put into pot farms, and then somehow the money disappeared and.
A lot of money was collected from pot farms.
Yeah.
And it was given back.
And then it just got disassembled.
No, no, I can, I can explain all that to you, it was, it's not as nefarious as you think.
Gabriel?
Yes, sir. Uh, one, two, three, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
Can you go back to the, uh, on the economic activity there?
Yeah.
For some people, I think they might want to include and promote commercial activities, uh, where, to, you know, to, and more general, that extent.
Okay, uh, all right. So how, how do you operate that?
Promote commercial?
Promote, uh, commercial activity, you know, we're talking about job growth.
Right, okay, okay, I think we have some job growth, uh, information in here. Uh, okay.
Read, uh, read it up, please, I'm just glad we picked the job in there. Let us speak up. He's talking.
Stimulating.
Are you sure?
Okay.
Director Elliott?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be right with you, there are two gentlemen behind me who are, is there, next?
Okay, um, really, really quick, Gabriel, um, on the boundary of the Copperopolis community plan, uh, it shows the boundary, uh, as it goes on the outside of town square, but it's on the south side of four. So, uh, with the boundary, um, the cannabis farm across the way wouldn't be included in the, uh, the community.
I don't know that.
Where is it?
Okay, sweet.
How far?
About ten o'clock or eleven o'clock.
Uh, right there.
No, little harbor down.
Right there, right.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's north of the, uh.
It's not in the plant area.
It's not in the plant area.
So he wouldn't, we wouldn't gain any funding from him?
Or, it, we can't, we can't address it within the community area, but there's nothing we can do with that particular farm outside.
Right, and, and, and I'm not even sure, so even if, without the board of supervisors actually going back and, and taking another look at the, at the cannabis ordinance, uh, the way it stands right now, if you have properties in the plant area that meet the locational requirements, that meet the lot size requirements, that meet the zoning requirements, they can actually have cannabis in the plant area. That is what got approved in 2019. Okay, I'll, I'll. Good. So, my takeaway, and what I've learned out of this meeting, is that communication is key.
It is.
Couple of words that Bernadette said struck me, and that's, we need the knowledge of what's going on, and we need to be educated, and if we didn't get educated about the pot farm, shame on us, we, we need a better open line of communication. Um, as far as a pot farm goes, uh, I'm not against that, but I don't think it's the highest and best use for that corner. I'd like to see a Chevron station as you're busting up the hill.
And a car walk, that works.
Or, you know, whatever, uh, in and out, but the point is, is that, is that that particular choice, in my opinion, and I'm all for legal whatever, but it was, it was a poor choice for that corner. And if we can't change it, we didn't know about it.
Right.
So maybe on your list, we, and maybe the developers can help, we need to communicate, and we don't, I don't have a solution, but there's probably a hundred ways.
How about, uh, I, I know there's a lot of people with these questions, and I think that what we should probably do is, is, uh, work with Gabriel to get, get through this presentation, and maybe spend fifteen minutes talking to me about concerns, and I can answer your questions, and if there's any information that, you know, you feel you need, I can write down your email address, I can get in contact with you, you know, we can reach, I can, hopefully, we can get a lot of this at least out there in the public and know that there's a process and that we are working on.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I think that if we all have open ears and educate ourselves in what's going on, we can make better decisions.
Very good, thank you.
Going back to the document, to create job opportunities for recreational opportunities here, um, Lake Tolic is the lake, it's a reservoir, and most of the property around the reservoir is privately.
Privately.
Tridam came in, I agree, it should never have been put there, uh, there will be a death eventually, but the recreational sector to attract tourists to the region, it, it gets, it.
It's up.
It, it's up.
Yeah.
There. Create jobs in the recreational sector to attract tourists to the region and create long-term economic benefits to the area. What recreation are you gonna give, are you talking bike trails, are you talking off-road vehicles and paths? Then you're still working with ranchers, we not want to give up their land.
We're, we're talking, we're talking all of the above. See, this is, this is the issue. If we don't have that as a goal, we are never going to achieve it.
Good.
If you don't have it as a goal, we're never gonna reach it. So we have to have it as a goal, and we're gonna work towards it, because it is very, very necessary for this community. So if we make that a goal, then we can see those opportunities when we see them, and then we can take advantage of them.
Can I just ask a quick question, and I'm probably sure everybody in this room wants to know more. I believe the county built a park next to the hotel on the lake, they've been working on it two years almost. It's still gated, and.
That's what she was, that's what she was talking about. So first of all, the county did not build it, you know, private, privately owned by Tridam, it was a condition of their license to do it. It's a joke, it's ten pounds of shit and a five pound sack, and it is open.
Okay, so.
And it is.
But it, but it, is it for the general public?
Yes, yes, it is, it's for the public.
I'm assuming you.
They just opened it the other day. It's, uh, uh, yeah, it, it's open the other day, uh, six o'clock in the morning, the gate opens, eight o'clock and nine.
But the bathrooms aren't open.
Yeah. Well, the bathrooms aren't open. They're not open.
They are, they are.
They're, they're, they worked on them today. I have, I have, I don't, they, they, uh, they're, uh, it, 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 uh, well, Susan Larson was there today with her. And the, the. Well, the water might've got turned off for a while. That's all I'm saying, is, um.
All right.
It's, it's open, but it's, uh, it's not the county's, the county did approve it, but it's privately owned by Tridam. And so if you have any problems, call Susan Larson, I have her number.
No, just, it's so, anybody, any tourist can stop there and use it.
Anybody can stop there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is access.
There's access to the.
There, but.
Not on.
But it is privately owned.
Privately owned, but not for low class.
Uh, yeah.
There's no montrails, I don't even think they put their fire on montrails.
This will pop, goes back to communication lack of.
Yeah. Any other questions? Comments?
I have a question, if you scroll up a little bit. We're talking about jobs in the hotel area and jobs for youth, how about jobs for anybody else?
Well, that's what, that's what.
We're hiring at the Lake Street Center, everybody wants a job. Anything, and everything.
Yeah, with great jobs for every, for anybody, period, but we have to focus on, on the youth, because there's not a whole lot for them to do here, once they leave high school, they are done. And, and we'd like to keep them around, and, you know, we can keep them around, is to give them, uh, uh, opportunities to stay by property and raise their family.
But that doesn't help the person who just moved to the. Well, and it also doesn't help that, give them a job, there's nowhere for them to live, that's all.
Right, it's all, it's all related, it's all related. So, these are, these are, these are the challenges that the county has. And you, as county residents, have a lot of say into what the future of this community is going to be. If we sit around and do nothing, ten years from now, we're sitting here talking about the same thing. To me, that is not progress. We want progress, we want change. And so let's focus on those things that I think are important and valuable, so that we can try to reach for them. Uh, we have, uh, a few other aspects of this document, aesthetics and community character. We want to encourage orderly development while maintaining a rural, mining, ranching town atmosphere with an emphasis on community appearance and character. So what we're seeing here is, we know who we are. So when we do development, we want to maintain that originality of this community. So even if we're going to high-quality, well-designed development that is compatible with surrounding uses, and is integrated into the community and the physical environment, then we just look, I mean, that's, that's fine, that, that's a very good goal to have. Uh, so, uh, natural resources, we recognize that we want to, uh, achieve a harmonious relationship between the development environment and surrounding by preserving open space and agricultural greenlands and protecting and enhancing the natural resources of the plant area. So, I mean, these are very, very good things for this community. Uh, as we move along, and, and if you, you know, want to add on to any one of these things, and come up with something really, really original, uh, let's, let's do it. Uh, this is a collaborative effort. Uh, we want to improve traffic circulation and provide safe routes for both vehicular and non-vehicular traffic. Uh, have a balanced circulation system that provides for the safe and efficient movement of people and goods while maintaining the role and historic character of the community. So, we want to do things better, but we don't want to forget who we really are. Uh, one of the unique things about, about, about the county in general is that most of our roadways are actually state roadways. Uh, there are, you know, a handful of roadways in this community that are actually county maintained. We don't have private roads, or we have state highways. So, uh, somehow we need to find a good balance whereby, uh, we have a road system that has, that has a hierarchy. We have resources, that way we have potholes in, on our, on our roads, we can actually fix them. Uh, right now, things are not really where they should be. So, when we focus on our deficiencies, we try to improve and, and, and do better. Um, historic preservation, right now, uh, you know, we, we're looking at, uh, some sort of, an ordinance, uh, that protects historic properties. People who do historic preservation right now are doing it out of the goodness of their hearts. Uh, the county cannot purchase property if they felt they had to protect it because we don't have the resources. So what this ordinance would do is identify where those properties are, and then we're gonna be eligible to get, uh, grants from the state to actually make improvements, because keeping a structural historical, uh, is a lot of undertaking. Uh, so, uh, through the Males Act and similar, uh, uh, legislation, we can actually accomplish that as we go along. Uh, public safety, we want to ensure that, uh, we maintain, uh, you know, through fire protection measures, which is one aspect of public safety in this community. You know, we just had a fire, you know, less than a couple of hours, a couple of hours ago, uh, right behind, right behind the, the alley. Fire season in this community is not very fun, uh, most people live through the firefight, we're supposed to see some of the side effects of the firefight, uh, as things haven't really gone back to the way they were, uh, depending on which area you do live. Uh, so, uh, we want to, uh, ensure that people, property, the economy and natural resources are safe from the risk of natural man-made hazards. Uh, one thing that I did, meant that I did take a note of was, in some of the, one of the comments was that there needs to be a sheriff's station in Copperopolis, and I tend to agree with that. Uh, because Copperopolis is, because of where it is, in relation to some of the other parts of, of, of the, of the county, it would be nice to have a sheriff's station, but we do.
We have, we do.
Excuse me.
Yes.
It's a, yeah, it's a, but it's, I mean, what I'm talking about, yeah, that is a satellite sheriff's station, somebody mentioned it as a satellite sheriff's station. So I don't know if that is enough to respond to some of your, um, emergency needs, uh, in this community or not, but that was one of the comments that I received, and I'm putting it out there, so.
So just, supposedly at the grocery store in that shopping center, there is a sheriff's station, I've never seen a sheriff there in my life, but is it active?
I'm saying it's volunteer.
It's a volunteer sheriff's station in this county, they're six days a week.
Oh.
Um, public, uh, community services, uh, public facilities, we would respect this growth, recreational activities for children and the elderly. Somebody sent me an email that said, um, the kids around here don't have anything to do, the elderly don't have anything to do, we don't have a senior center, we don't have a place where people can gather, et cetera, et cetera, and, and those things are true. So, here it is, we're seeing it, it's been, it's been asked for, and we're looking at it, and all this comes under the umbrella of growth. Uh, once our community begins to grow, these things that most public places take for granted, you know, uh, having, uh, a, a, a community park, uh, having, uh, places for children to go, having places for the elderly to go, have a senior center where you can go and do quilting, uh, play the piano, do all kinds of stuff together. We don't, we don't have that in this community, so we have to make it a goal. Uh, housing, uh, you know, uh, you know, controlling use of single-family homes for short-term vacation rentals, that was a specific, uh, uh, request that I did receive. And, um, apparently, uh, it is one of those things in this community that may have, uh, some of whom have gotten, uh, some, uh, experience, a negative experience from, uh, vacation rental, uh, people, uh, who, you know, they come here to party and play. vacation rental, uh, people, uh, who, you know, they come here to party and play and leave, uh, leave all kinds of things for the county to take care of as they, as they head back to their different destination. So these are positive things that I want us to focus on so that we can, uh, understand what we really want. And when we, next time we send information out, I'm going to send this document with the edits in it to as many people as we can find that will receive that. Uh, so, um, and then, so now that we have the goals, now we want to talk about some of the policies. How do we achieve those goals? The first thing is we want to ensure that all new development is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and the community plan. So consistency between our community plan and the general plan, uh, they have to work and enhance. Uh, uh, we want to have a variety of housing makes to accommodate the needs of future residents in the community. So, uh, we want to have, you know, large homes, medium-sized homes, small homes, ranches, mini ranches, condominiums, townhouses, apartment units. Uh, the county is finding it very, very difficult to attract people to come here to work because they can't find a place to live. That is a challenge for the county. Uh, protect and retain the historic assets of the community. I think that's a wonderful, uh, goal to have. Uh, ensure that new development within the planning area, uh, providing a mix of uses, including a wide residential, commercial, visitor-serving, and job-generated uses that facilitate, uh, their development as independent and economically viable projects. So again, we're talking about mixed use, uh, trying to maximize, uh, uh, the potential of a property. Uh, you have, uh, maybe you have a little shop downstairs, a little apartment over the shop, things of that nature. Encourage new development to be designed to be compatible with the natural, scenic, and historic resources of, of, of Towne Rose County. This is a very beautiful, uh, community. Uh, things might be looking a little dry right now, but when we have all that rain and it's, and things were green, very, very beautiful. You can close your eyes and think you're in, in, you're in Scotland or something like that. Uh, preserve and enhance existing buildings and other structures of historical and architectural importance. Uh, again, you know, places like, um, places like the Armory, uh, where block and that structure is preserved, there are other structures, uh, that are not, that are vulnerable to development, that have not been protected, even though they have historical significance. Uh, we need to understand that those kinds of, of, of places do exist. Edge your ways to the community. Uh, do some monumentation. Uh, you are now entering Copperopolis or you're leaving Copperopolis. Have each, uh, have each community within the county have a very distinct look of what, uh, some of the monumentation should look like. Uh, provide adequate land for schools and parks. Uh, very, very important. Uh, we, we need parks. Uh, I made a presentation to the body supervisors not too long ago, we were talking about parks, and I said, "We have a lot of land, we have a lot of open space, but all those lines and open spaces, they're under private property." So how do we now build a central park? Or how do we build a park that everybody can go to on the weekend where your grandkids and kids can play soccer? Uh, you can play tennis, you can play basketball, you can do all kinds of stuff. Uh, but it's going to take planning, it's going to take vision. And, but if you don't put it down on paper, we're never going to get there. We want to present the rural character. We're not running the wood from who we are. I encourage that. Uh, we want to beautify and, and enhance properties. Uh, you know, uh, carpe peale is very, very important. Uh, and, uh, once we have that sense of pride, uh, in our community, we have a sense of pride, uh, in our properties, beautifying them, uh, will not be a challenge at all. Maintain commercial districts within the historic Copperopolis. Uh, we need those commercial districts, we need the development that go into them. Uh, bring in new businesses, uh, into, into the planning area. Yeah. Uh, so, uh, as far as circulation and public facilities.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I have a suggestion for addition to the group of, what was that, one point would be, I guess.
Okay.
And that is the recognition and the respect of the homeowners' associations in the area and their appropriate CCNRs. Because I know for a fact that the county does not recognize the, uh, or, or, and, and acknowledge the presence of some of the CCNRs in our housing, in our homeowners' association. And what, and the problem that that creates is the county approves something that is restrictive in CCNRs and then, and then all hell breaks. And then it gets really ugly. But if the county and the gentleman down here at the end was suggesting a coalition of homeowners, well, until the county recognizes all the homeowners' associations and, and respects their CCNRs, that isn't going to happen.
The county can't do that.
They can't enforce that.
The county cannot do that.
I'm not asking for the county to enforce, I'm asking the county to acknowledge that they exist.
Uh, well.
And I know that they can do that.
Yeah.
I know they can say, "If you, if your homeowners' association hasn't approved your request for a lot line adjustment, then we can't approve it."
Yeah, we, we actually, we actually do that, but I'll, I'll, I'll put it down. Okay. Say it.
You said acknowledge and respect, correct?
Yeah. I hung up on the word. Acknowledgement is a step.
I mean, you have, uh, D and G doing. Uh, I.
I didn't make a comment on that. Uh, but on the other hand, the HOA is maybe often being in line with what the county's, uh, ordinances are. And then not by source of county shouldn't be subservient to the HOA.
Yeah, but they are.
What are they?
The HOA is, is, is more restrictive typically than the county and there's, there's restrictions in Saddle Creek that don't exist in the rest of the county.
Well, yes and no. Some, sometimes they are, sometimes not.
Well, I'm not saying all, I'm just saying that, that exists.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with some.
Okay. Um, let's talk about circulation. This is one of the issues that, uh, that I think is important, uh, to everyone. Uh, we want to improve the traffic circulation in the planning area. Uh, provide a safe, intermix of vehicular, vehicular and non-vehicular traffic. Improve the safety of Princeberry Road. Ensure that new development is responsible for all of style circulation improvements necessary.
Quick comment with your index second. You're calling CCP1 and you're, I just want CCP1 as well. CCP.
Uh, no. Okay. CCP. Okay, yeah, I, I got you, I got you. We'll, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
So it'll be a CCP1 under circulation and then a CCP1 under, um, under, under.
Yeah.
I get it, I get it. I, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Because if you're on the site, you have to cite the other thing.
Right, right, right. So if we make this a two, then it's very clear. Right. Good. See, we're making progress.
Good on you.
All right. So, um, improve, increase roadway connectivity to reduce turbulence and enhance emergency response and encourage opportunities for trips made by walking and bicycling. That can be achieved, that can be accomplished. Um, uh, I think C-CO has a trail line and a bicycle line that we can actually tie into. Uh, encourage and support safe, effective, efficient public transportation service that meets the reasonable needs of Calaveras residents. Public transportation is important when you have a, a community that has a lot of elderly people in it that I can rely on, that could rely on public transportation. So I'm just going to create. Um, so new residential construction shall consist of a broad range of new housing types to meet the needs of all the residents of Calaveras County. Uh, develop, construct, and maintain safe, decent, and well-built, affordable housing units in the community. Ensure that all new and existing housing units are equipped with energy, efficient, and appropriate weatherization. So these are some of the things that the state is going to want us to do as we move forward, uh, you know, with, uh, with our housing stuff. So I'm going to move this up forward. And then transportation and open space, water supply is very important by existing businesses and residents, natural and certain resources, landscaping, landmarks, uh, uh, high-quality system of recreational facilities. Uh, we need a parks master plan for the county. We can identify certain areas where you can have community parks, uh, neighborhood parks, and so on and so forth. Uh, preserve prehistoric, archaeological, cultural, historical, and paleontological resources. So, you know, places where, uh, you know, the Native Americans, uh, were part of, of this area, the, the Miwoks were part of this area. Uh, we need to preserve that, that cultural, their cultural heritage as we move along with new development. Uh, we need to protect scenic resources. We have scenic resources, uh, in our county, uh, on portions of the state highway. Um, not, not, not enough, uh, so to speak, but I, I think, I think we all understand where the shortcomings are. That we're seeing things that we didn't see four years ago when, when a lot of things were happening. Uh, we still want to, uh, mine insights, uh, preserve any cultural uses, uh, oak woodlands. We've been working on an oak woodlands audit now for, for about, you know, eight months. Uh, one, one of these days, we're going to have something ready for, for the community. Um, public safety, uh, this will be a five. Uh, people and property, uh, from natural resources, risk of natural and, and man-made hazards. Uh, protect the community from logistical risks of death, uh, injuries, property damage, economic and social dislocation. Protect the community from, uh, injuries, uh, economic loss to hazardous materials and wastes. Uh, and, uh, so this is where, uh, the, some of the headings that we've discussed so far, this is where we have stopped at this particular point. So what is going to happen next time is that we will incorporate some of the notes that we've taken this evening. Uh, we will send that out to people. They will actually get to see what this document looks like. We will, um, ask for additional comments. Once we receive those comments, then we'll incorporate them into this document and then we'll bring it back again and we'll have another, uh, community meeting.
Will you accept a comment? Would you accept a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, at the top, it should be recognition of the human rights to life, liberty, and property.
Under which?
At the very top, we talk about the purpose of this.
Yes.
The purpose of this document is not to take control of private property. It's to enhance.
Okay. Well, fine. Okay, so on the location provision, physical description of history, um, lay a tower, community vision.
That's it.
Okay. And how did you describe that again?
The Constitution, uh, tells us about this life, liberty, and property. And that's, uh, pretty old cop, copcy.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Um, it is now eight o'clock. So, uh, unless we have, uh, some additional comments, uh, those who have questions regarding cannabis, Mr. Oliver would, uh.
Will now take his beating.
Right. Transition to the cannabis question.
You have to roll your own gun?
No. They get provided all and I'm not sure. No.
So. So, um, so let me just give you some background, some of you guys know me, some of you don't. My name is Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. I've been the Chief Building Official for four years. And about a year and a half ago, I was, uh, put in charge of cannabis control on an interim basis, given the direction to, uh, not just babysit the department, but to look at the functionality of the program, talk to the public, talk to the staff, talk to cannabis growers, find out what's working, what's not working, uh, on all sides, and make some recommendations in order to improve the program. And improve is for the betterment of all parties involved. Um, currently, we have eighty-five cannabis permits that are active throughout the county. Uh, we have eighty-four, I believe, that are a conditional approval, which may not be picked up. Uh, the, the conditional approval process is merely just identifying that they have a right to apply for a permit. They haven't gone through the entire process. Just for information on the site question, there is a grading permit. And that's it. They have a conditional approval on four, or sorry, three, applications. So they, we've vetted the fact that they have a right to obtain three permits for up to one acre each. They have not submitted the rest of the documentation in order to complete the process. There are multiple steps that they have to go through during that process for us to award them those permits. Now, I know there's some confusion because when you think permit, there's several different levels of permit and they're enforced in different ways. The permit typically issued by planning is the type of permit that you, that the entire neighborhood within so many feet gets a letter saying, "Hey, this is what's happening in your community, so you can comment." It's called a discretionary permit. The reason why it's discretionary is because you can make up mitigation measures. It's meant to be put out to the public. They figure out what the environmental impacts, the, the, the community impacts, and they, and they recommend restrictions to mitigate those issues. So if it's a noise issue, you know, they're, they're going to recommend, uh, you know, time periods where you have quiet, this sort of thing. This permit type is more like a building permit. Cannabis permit is more like a building permit or a grading permit in the sense that the county, instead of making the cannabis permit discretionary and run through planning, they've made it to where there's been one county environmental impact report countywide addressing all the environmental issues and there is basic mitigation measures that are in place that they have to follow. There's no additional rules I can make for them. If they follow the rules, they get the permit. But on the other side, if they break the rules, I take the permit. Okay, so, so go ahead, sir.
How, how can, how can different areas within the county, so we can verse all, all the same type of restrictions?
By breaking it down into where reasonably can it be grown by zoning and by size of parcel, and then limiting where on the property you can place it and how much you can grow to, to try and mitigate things like this. There's a lot of people that don't like the smell. Outdoor grows, however, you can't avoid it. At certain times of the year, certain times of day, there will be an odor. Okay, so there are setbacks in parks. There's also measures in place to restrict the location from sensitive uses like schools. Okay, so these are baked in. So it's, it's essentially a series of checklists that they have to go through and those are qualified. Now, that means you don't get notified because either they have a right or they don't. It's like a grading permit. If I want to carve a driveway onto my ten acres, I have to tell my neighbor I'm doing it. As long as I get the grading permit and I follow the rules so I don't, you know, put a bunch of mud in the creek, then I can get my permit, I can do the work. So that's how cannabis permit function. Now, but there's, there's mechanisms here. Every permit is capped at. Every permit is capped at an acre. Once they're locked in, that's what they're taxed for, that amount they say they're growing. Even if they don't grow enough, if they say, I got an acre, then I am getting approved to grow. That's what we tax them on, even if it comes in at a quarter of an acre because they had a pest or something that, that took it out. There's other things that everyone needs to know that there's a misunderstanding about. There's no pesticides allowed on these sites because it would be an off-brand, no pesticide has been tested in the United States for cannabis. They've all been approved for other types of, of plant, but not cannabis, so it's an off-brand use, and it's not legal in California to do that. So when you see them spraying, they're either spraying citric acid, vitamin C, or they're spraying soybean oil. That's pretty much it. Any of their fertilizers have to be organic, so there's no pesticides. There's nothing. Now, our job is to randomly, annually inspect them to make sure there's nothing on their site. Okay, so in...
Are they announced?
What's that?
Or are they announced?
It's random. Sometimes it's announced, sometimes it's not. And on some cases, we've been out multiple times in a year as a surprise because we've gotten preponderant complaints. So, but that particular site, we don't have any activity on yet except the grading. We do, we know that there are three separate permits that are in play right now, but they have to establish they have a suitable water source, they have to establish they have adequate security, they have to establish...
They don't need to clean the water because a lot of people think that water trucks go down the road and they cannot.
They cannot.
You have to come, you have to water marijuana in your cannabis farm from the ground of Mother Earth. You see water trucks? I stopped two grows in Bar 20 because of water trucks. You can do whatever the heck you want, it's legal. I won't be in your business, but when it's not that way, I stop it. He's no longer grown.
And, and, and there's been multiple people that have called us and say, hey, there's water trucks. Now, and in addition to that, there are requirements for testing those wells annually, and that there's a five-year length of time they have to test, and then it skips a year and goes back on seven, making sure those wells are going to be maintained, and, and, because if they run out of water, they're done. And now, that doesn't prevent them from entering into an agreement to get, uh, to get a water service provided, but they cannot truck water in. Okay, so, so there's, there's an item there. Now, I'll admit, I, I'll just say this, personally, I don't like the smell, and for twelve years, my job was destroying it when it was illegal. Okay, I'm indifferent. I, the rules are the rules. So if there's a rule in place, I'm going to act for the benefit of the person trying to get the permit. Okay, unless something crosses the line, and I have to go back on a violation or something that is clearly an error we need to rectify. Okay, so that being said, permits are legal in specific zoning types.
Is there any, is there any kind of restriction on this well? Like I want to live next to a stone ranch.
Well, or a horse ranch, or cattle ranch, or anything else that generates a smell. The difference is...
Well, you smell a lot better than...
Picking is varied. My family brings, they're ranchers, so I don't envy that. I don't like the smell anymore of that, but I'll get you...
You're a group, it's like it's stuck.
No, I, I get it. Now, the difference is ranchers don't have a setback from their cows to the property line. That was the mitigation measure was. You have seventy-five feet or in co-locations, a hundred feet from the property line. You also have from scenic highways. Fortunately, this area is not a scenic highway, but a scenic highway, you've got a thousand feet, you can't, you can't be within view of that.
Look all prices, no?
The national scenic highway, they actually, yeah, we can, we can look it up and know where the scenic highway starts and stops. This particular highway starts at Arlen and ends at, maybe not London, um...
Mar...
Yeah, Mar... So, that being said, what they're pursuing currently, they're not in violation of any ordinances, okay, but they still have a long way to go. Now, I think we can all agree that's probably a bad place to put that. Some of us would say that is probably the dumbest place you possibly put that because of crime. Okay, most cannabis farmers, if not all of them, are very conscious of security where they locate their growth. So if there was a growth close to me, they're going to put it where you won't see it that well, or they're going to make it look like a very strong security presence is there so that they don't get robbed. Putting that there, if I was the bad guy and I, I knew how to steal a U-Haul, I, I know where I'm going in a couple of months, you know?
But the bus stop is right there.
What's that?
There's a bus stop.
Right, well, that's the thing, bus stops aren't on the sensitive item list, but, but, uh, currently, very compliant, but it has highlighted some areas. And like I said, part of my mission for the board was to identify what's working and what's not. Next month, depends on when the sheriff's giving his presentation, but no later than the end of July, I'll be bringing a presentation to the board as a study session to recommend some changes to the ordinance.
So we got majority in people, compliments, side petition, says like we don't want to get, it happened to it?
No.
They, they might have a right to the land.
But I think it could be a good idea to add, to add to the ordinance, like, no bus stop.
I, I'm, I'm going to make some recommendations, but I, I am going to make sure that I, I shop it around, okay? And some of these recommendations are going to be related to security. On the other hand, there's some punitive things that have done nothing but generate a lot of work for the county for no reason, that we're probably going to eliminate as far as process to make it faster, but the restrictions will still be in place as far as how you conduct your business safely. And we'll be working with cannabis industry as well as the sheriff's office on what is reasonable to enhance security and prevent the attractive nuisance angle that that might represent right now. Okay, so, go ahead, sir.
Two questions. One, if I have a body shop, I have to account for every ounce of paint that comes in and out of my shop.
Correct.
Okay. Do they have to account for every ounce of fertilizer they use? Or no?
No.
Because some of these guys over fertilize like crazy to get the growth, and it's right in the soil, right in our water.
Well, there's, there's, they, they can't use a lot of the fertilizer you'd normally use in your yard, and they don't want to because if they, they, okay, so, so the, what are they tracking? They're tracking every plant, and they're testing every plant. They're tracking the volumes that they're storing on site because if, for instance, if they have tractors and they're storing diesel, and they store too much diesel, we're asking them for spill containment, we're asking them for, for, you know, fire...
They have to have a hazmat permit.
Yes.
Period.
Yeah, if, if they exceed their normal val, you know, the, the minimum storage amounts, then yes, they go to...
Anything over five gallons, they have to have a...
Exactly.
Five gallons, you know, doesn't count, it's just normal.
Yes.
But anything over fifty gallons...
So they get COFA permits for, for anything?
They have hazmat permits for everything and storage for all.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. Now, and, and so they don't want to use any material that is going to cause their product to be tested and fail. If their, if their product is tested for anything pops on pesticides or any, any illegal ingredients, they can't sell it, it's done. And whatever they harvested, you're assuming it's going through the California state system
and not being just shoved off someone's rack.
Where does it know if it kept that?
On their, what they're growing. It can go anywhere.
Where does it know if it kept that?
It gets destroyed.
By who?
It is, well, okay, there might be, remember, they could, in the, in the, they could explain it better formally. Just give me an example of what happens. There was a cannabis site that we had, they've got an infestation of mites, and their plants were not sellable. The state directed them to leave them there until the state could come out and inspect it so that they could decide whether it needed to be destroyed or not. They had to let those plants die, dry up, and stay there on site for three months until metric got out there and said, okay, you're right, they were bad, cut them down and destroy them. Then they gave them permission, and they made sure that that destruction and, and...
So they just cut them down and burned them?
They cut, no, they don't burn them.
No?
No, they take them to a landfill, they bury it, under supervision. So that, they don't, they don't let, now, I'm not going to say that the system's perfect, but they have a whole system of people at the state that, once they put a little, that little band around that plant, the intent is that band stays with that plant all the way to the retailer. Okay, so now...
And they have to account for every band, correct?
Yes. And if they don't, the state comes out.
And why are they allowing this within a mile, mile and a half of a elementary school?
The elementary school distance is a thousand feet.
With the bus stop, we can get the bus driver to write a letter about the local thing.
Well, I think that what it's going to take is me bringing all the items that, I'm, I'm listening to you and I'm taking these notes, right? I'm going to bring these items to the board and say, okay, here are some items that the community has expressed, that the cannabis industry has expressed, the sheriff has expressed. Which ones do you want me to seek inclusion into the ordinance? And then they tell me what they want, and then I go through that process with Planning Director, it is in chap, it is in Title Seventeen. I work with him to make the changes that goes to the planning commission first. There's plenty of input from the neighborhoods on what needs to happen. There, there is a process to get all input into this. Okay, now, let me make some, let me make some honest observations for you guys. Legal growers are not a problem. I've been out to all of them. I've met every one of them. I've done, I've done some of the, the pop inspections to catch them, you know? Somebody complains, oh, they're spraying X, Y, I, I drive out there. Okay, Michael, my supervising inspector, has done most of it, but I, I helped him build that whole scenario, okay? The legal growers don't want pesticides. They don't want employees on their site that's going to steal or cause problems in the neighborhood. Okay, they, they don't need it, it's not financially viable to do that. Okay, now, imagine any other business out there that's trying to turn a profit. If you have a business, you want employees who are going to be economical, not going to cause you trouble, not going to waste materials. They want to cooperate as members of the community, as business owners, and they are doing their best to live up to that. Now, I'm not saying they're all perfect. There's a few boneheads out there, and we watch them, and we have meetings with them and say, hey, you're coasting on the wrong side of that. You got fifteen days or I may have to revoke your permit. We do that, but on the other hand, the good actors, we do everything we can to help them because they are, they're part of the community now. The permits, the permits are, are a reality.
I heard that the one, they're doing a conference, is actually a LA-based company.
Correct.
So they're not part of the community.
Well, but when they're here, they have to behave like...
They're from LA, the people over here in the scroll are from LA.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a public, it's a public document, so I, I can say that, yeah, but what I'm saying is if they're here, they have to follow the rules. If they're smart, like the people in the community, they're reaching out to the neighbors, they're helping the neighbors, what can I do to, to reduce the, you know? By and large, the cannabis growers in their communities are trying to live in stasis with the rest of the community. That being said, who doesn't have, who, who has a business that doesn't have an employee occasionally goes sideways and you have to do something about it? Okay, they're just like everybody else's run of a business, they're, and, and we're trying to do our best at facilitating, but where we see a hazard and they see a problem, it's time to have a conversation. Right? So all I can say is that we've been as strict as we can with the people who are bad actors, and we've done our best to treat the good actors just like anyone else coming in for a permit and doing their best on their property, and we're going to continue to do that. You guys will have an opportunity to comment if, if the board directs me to make changes. The planning commission is going to hear this, and you'll have an opportunity to comment.
And...
If there is a need, I'll shop to HOA. Now, if there's a need, I'll shop to any organization that has a question. I'm willing to sit down and hear your comments, I'm willing to share the information that I've got. Uh, I want to make sure that everyone is as comfortable, as comfortable as possible. I'll say this, once again, the legal growers aren't the problem, it's those illegal dogs, and the people that know how to enter and cause mischief into the system that we've got built.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Because I'm worried about the water. I'm worried about them draining the water. Anybody protecting that pond or that lake, whatever that is out there, is anybody going to monitor, do they know how much water they're going to be taking from underground? Water's a hot commodity out here. There's people in Diamond Twenty that don't even have water, and now these people are going to be taking water out of the system.
Maybe you might make alert.
What do we have to prevent that from happening? I don't want to buy a house out there and not have water because these people took it all. Let me tell you, let me tell you this. I live in Diamond Twenty, and I am pissed that that is there and that I have to drive by it every day now. So my emotions are getting a little bit, I learn myself. I'll tell you this, I'm also wildlife biologist. I will offer my services to anybody that needs that work done because I hate that. I am pissed, and two years ago, I kind of raised the alarm to people that that was going up because I asked what was going on, and nobody did it. So now I have to drive by that every day. I don't want my water sucked up from that.
Right, right.
And who's protecting that pond out there?
So, so you, so, so valid concern, and, and the EIR did address that, um, and the program did address that to a point because there's only so much that we know about the water under the ground around here. This county, and I'm, I'm guessing that he can back me up on this, has a diverse geology. And so you have water pooling in places that, that, you know, you can, you can drill a well and get, you know, forty gallons per minute, take five steps this way, drill another one and get nothing. We have fractured rock, we have sandy loam, we have all kinds of different features, and it changes throughout this county. So it's really hard to say where are you getting your water from and how much do you have? I've seen people drill a well, you know, right on top of a, a hillside that they took the top off of, and they got water. I, I, and I've seen wells run dry and drive a quarter of a mile, and I've got water coming out of the same mountain, just coming out of the side of the mountain that they drilled their well on. So it, it, it's, it's difficult to track. What I can say is this, they have to calculate and be able to produce enough water from their wells, or have a service contract for water enough to provide for the plants they are growing. If their well tests fail, they're, and they can't drill another one that gives them what they need, they're done. How does that impact the neighbors? I honestly can't tell you. It was, it was addressed when, when it was adopted, but it, but I'll liken it to the, to the ranchers around here. The ranchers and the farmers around here are very conscious of water, and they're putting wells where they can. At the same time, they don't like to talk about if a well goes dry, because if it gets out, the wells are going dry, it causes bigger issues to that industry. I would say that everybody who's growing anything right now should be very worried about water, not just cannabis growers, but we're, we're doing our best to monitor the well status for that industry. I don't know if environmental health is using the same scrutiny on the other industries that are drawing water. I can tell you that, yeah, they do use a lot of water. There are a lot of other agricultural commodities, I'm not saying they're agricultural, I'm just saying that there are a lot of other commodities that draw a lot of water in this, in this area too. This is a bigger issue than just cannabis that we really need to address. As it relates to the pond, they're far enough away from the pond to have not triggered anything from Army Corps, and as far as I'm aware, they do have to go through fish and wildlife, that's a step that they haven't completed yet in their permit process. The wells, I'm hoping, won't impact that, that, that pond, but that is, as far as I can tell, that's a man-made pond, but now that it's got, you know, now that it's got plants growing in it, it's not something that you can go remove. It's now a, a habitat, so it does change things. Uh, but yeah, things that we are monitoring, they don't, their work is nowhere near that. Uh, but yeah, things that we are monitoring, they don't, their work is nowhere near that, that feature.
So can we see the planning that has been done so far? Can we, as a public entity, look at what the process of them are? And we look at their files?
Okay, so the grading permit, any grading permit is public record. They've applied for permit for grading and they were given it, the application, the, all of the documents that were approved are public record, and you can see them. And the Public Works Department has, has those available. You can make a public records request, they will provide that information for you. In addition, anything as part of a, a cannabis permit application, when they apply, is public record. You may do a Public Records Act request for any of our documents related to cannabis. None of it is confidential, as far as I'm aware. There might be more than two documents, but it's not as it relates to the site plan, the, the production, the, the permit type, that's all public record. Okay? I know it's not the best information, guys, I know it is, it's frustrating and, and, I mean, on a personal note, I've lived here ten years. I never thought I'd see that over there. Uh, but know that, that we're watching them very carefully as we do all of our permit ease. And if there is an issue, we intend to bring it forward to the board.
How are you doing?
Uh, it's roughly eighty-five thousand dollars an acre if it's outdoor grow. There's three separate permitting applications that need to be...
Good to see you. How are you?
Uh, I was, not everybody's walked out, but there will be another town hall before we walk out. Another town hall, fit, on IWM. So it's listed in all those letters that you've got to your house. There will be a town hall at the firehouse at five thirty. And, um, IWM just put it out this afternoon, so you'll start seeing that soon even tomorrow. And follow-up in District Four will be the following Tuesday in the City of Engle at the city fire department, at the same time, at five thirty. And then there are other, there will be another list of town halls throughout all the districts that talk about the same thing. So if you're not able to make any of the town halls here in District Four, you can go to another district town hall, whether it be in Arnold or McFongy Hill, and it'll be the same information. So, um, going back to earlier tonight, that is why it's so difficult to schedule because there are a lot of town halls happening over the next two months, not just with planning department, but with a lot of other departments that are happening. So all of its supervisors are competing for staff right now, and you've got to make it work because we're, we're taking them all over the county overnight. So, uh, but there will be a proper town hall on the, on IWM. So, I think we're walking into it, thank you.
No, 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 no.
But thank you all for tonight and here, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the questions, and I think this has been a good feedback for Doug.